Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our November 18th, 6:00 PM council meeting. This evening, our invocation will be given by Pastor Greg Taylor from Asbury United Methodist Church, and Councilmember Heredia will be leading us in our pledges this evening. If you'd please stand, and gentlemen, remove your caps.
Let's pray together. Gracious God, we thank you for the gift of this day and for all the people gathered in this room, neighbors who care about the well-being of this city and who carry the responsibility of serving it with wisdom and love. So as we begin, we pray that you would help us all take a breath, settle our minds, steady our nerves, and would you give each person here the wisdom to see clearly? Listen generously and disagree without becoming disagreeable. Bless their work tonight, that every decision made might contribute to a safer, stronger, more compassionate Pasadena, a community where every person is valued, we pray, and every voice matters. And for all who call this city home, we ask for peace where there is tension, hope where there's discouragement, and a shared commitment to one another's good. We pray you guide us, God, not by fear or pride, but by love. Amen.
You can join me in the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I would do the Texas flag.
Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, indivisible.
Can you help me out? Let's switch these. Okay, now we'll have citizens wishing to...I'm sorry, Councilman Heredia.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everyone for being here, and I had a few things that I wanted to discuss. Over the last thirty days, or actually thirty-eight days, we had some concerns from some citizens regarding safety on the northern side of Pasadena. We took that concern to Chief Jackson and Officer Robinson. We happy to report that we have seen increased activity on the north side. We have some specific timings that they were doing some patrolling out there, so I want to thank you guys for that. Also, I want to shout out the construction on Texas, and Harris has been completed. There's some sidewalk improvements that were completed, and the neighbors residing in that property are very happy of the work that was done there. So we're very happy that was accessible to them. Also, I want to remind you guys that tomorrow is our last day for the Pasadena food drive. So tomorrow, make sure we can...all the last donations we can get would be very helpful, especially in this time of need, especially we have Thanksgiving around the corner. And because we have Thanksgiving around the corner, I also want to make sure that we know on Friday, November 21st, we are going to have a turkey drive at the Faith Christian Center between 1:30 and 2:30, and that's something that was brought together by Precinct Two, so we're very thankful for them collaborating for quite some time with the city of Pasadena. So with that, I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Valerio.
Good evening, everybody. Glad to see you all here. I have some bad news for District B. We have lost a significant amount of federal funding for the infrastructure projects that are happening in our district. I want to explain why I'm not going to be voting for some final readings today, and that's because I believe that some of the money that we are giving in pay raises and our cost of living increases could be used for supplementing some of those infrastructure projects that we've lost. I'm proud to have supported a cost of living each year that I've been a council member, and I want the city employees to know that I do support them, and I wish that I could ...I wish that I could consciously vote yes for this, but knowing that my district has lost so much, I can't support this today. And thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak.
Thank you. Councilwoman Guerrero.
Welcome, everyone. Good evening. Holidays are upon us, Thanksgiving in particular. I want to be thankful for everything that we have. We're thankful for each and every one of y'all being present. Thank y'all. I want to highlight, Councilwoman Heredia highlighting Precinct Two's turkey giveaway on this Friday, the 21st, in District G, so I want to highlight that for all the community members who are available and willing. I believe they have over 400 turkeys, so just FYI on that. I also want to highlight my own turkey drive going on, a council turkey giveaway in District C. I want to thank...and this one's done by sign-ups, so if you would like, we have over 100 turkeys. Please go sign up. I wish I had enough for everybody, but you know, we're limited. But with that token, I want to think...have a moment to thank our sponsors, United Providers of Texas, Mike Law, BMS Cat, Big A's Barber Shop, Southern Texas Lawn Service, and finally, 24/7 Leak Repair. Want to highlight all these people who stepped up and have provided us over 100 turkeys. It's open not just to District C or Pasadena, it's anyone you may know and need. Please feel free to go on my website and RSDP, just for quality controls we have, we don't turn anybody back. We ask for signup, and upon completion of signup, confirmation and the address will be provided. No, thank y'all for joining us.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Benavol.
Oh, there's a small project that got done in District D last week. There was one section of Thomas, most of it from Red Bluff to Alastair had been done, but there was a little spot between Burl and Tilden, only about 200 feet, and only the westbound lane. The rightbound...eastbound lane had been done and the westbound hadn't, and now it is. So the whole stretch from Red Bluff to Alastair is in good shape.
Thank you. Councilman Estrada.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I understand our senator is going to give us a legislative update. I don't see her now, but I want to recognize her and thank her for giving our community an update. I know she works really hard for our Senate District Six, and in the spirit of Thanksgiving, I want to wish everyone a safe...happy Thanksgiving next week. Thank you.
Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you all for being here tonight. Without a pass.
Councilman Fugel, sir.
All right, good evening, everybody. I just want to remind everybody about the McDonald's Texas Invitational basketball tournament that's coming to Pasadena in a few days. This is a huge tournament. Teams come from all over the state, and they get to play basketball. This is great for our city, for business, for education, and so please check out TexasInvitational.com for the game schedule. There's games starting on Thursday, Friday, and the championship game is on Saturday here in Pasadena, so check that out, Texas Invitational. Thank you all for being here. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Styron.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out this evening. It's great to see you all here. Just like Councilman Heredia said, the Pasadena canned food drive is tomorrow. Make sure you bring all your donated...your canned foods out to Campbell Hall between, I believe, 8:00 to 5:00. I was out there Monday, and they had 38,000 pounds of food already donated, which is almost a record they set last year at 40,000, so we're hoping to be able to beat that record this year. So come out with your canned foods and just...also, thanks to the Chamber of Commerce for Taste of the Town two weeks ago. It was a great event. I took the kids. They had a blast eating all the food and getting all the free goodies out there, so it was a great, great time out there. One other city event coming up is the Pasadena Tree Lighting, December 5th, two weeks from Friday, starting at 5:30 out across the street at the library. So come out and hope you're on the nice list and see Santa and hopefully Miss Claus. And also, don't forget Thanksgiving is next week. Just make sure we're thankful for everything that we have, all the blessings that we're given, and thank you for being able to serve this great community. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to citizens wishing to speak, and again, I'll reiterate that all comments from citizens are to be directed toward the council and not to any members of the audience, and you're to address the council and not turn and face the audience. If you do so, you will be escorted out. Thank you for disrupting the meeting. So our first citizen is Ty Smith.
You said, "Thank you for disrupting the meeting." What is that supposed to mean? Did you misspeak? Are we specifically speaking to you since the first weekend, and we spoke last time, and we had some issues? I mean, no? Am I still going? Cool. Yeah, so I've got a few problems. It's been a few months since I've spoke. Problems have just keep adding up here. I don't know why y'all hate the people that live over by Partnership Park. Y'all just want to destroy all the overhanging gazebos and all that stuff, just took all that out. Y'all already added the huge warehouse when there's one like two miles right by there behind on the Joe V, barely used, all there on the side of the road, frontage road going towards the highway, nothing but just storage places for lease. Y'all just don't care. And then like, y'all are talking about giving the city people raises. Cool, yeah, give like the waste management people, give like the janitors raises. Y'all don't need raises. The cops don't need raises. Give fire department raises. If we had EMT, other than the one that y'all...the third-party one y'all bought, the one that there's audits for the EMT times, all that stuff or whatever, yeah, maybe give them raises if they were actually our city employees, not third-party. Those kind of people need raises. The pigs don't need raises. They need an audit. They need PT. There's no reason that dude should be working for the department.
Sir, please face the council.
Yeah, I'm stating my political opinions right now. Someone that's obese like that should not be working for our police department. That is a problem for our citizens. That's going to cause that man to have to do an unnecessary use of force because he can't physically do something to somebody. So he's going to have to shoot somebody instead. He's going to have to taser somebody instead. There needs to be requirements. Y'all want to give them $10,000 sign-on bonuses. That guy doesn't need one. Nobody like that needs one. And if you think that I'm being cruel or something like that, it's because you're frickin' retarded and you don't use logic. You need to be logical. If you're in a position of power, don't do drugs and drive and went around with unprescribed pills, smoking weed, and try to play the victim card. Don't sit there and say you're going to hold people accountable, which is on video, and then when you get in a position of power, cower away and try to abuse your power and say you're going to arrest people for turning around? You're disgusting, Thomas. There's a reason why you had a heart attack right at your beginning. It's God sending us a sign.
He's disrupting the meeting. We'll pause the meeting until you escort them.
Why are you touching me? Why are you touching me? For what reason? Am I under arrest? Am I under arrest? I have my minutes still. Am I under arrest?
You're disrupting a meeting, sir.
I am under my three minutes. Am I under arrest? DA? Am I under arrest? Am I under arrest? Yes or no? I do not want to go outside. I want to finish my three minutes. So am I under arrest? Yes or no? Yes or no? Am I under arrest? Police chief? Am I under arrest for trying to finish my three minutes? I mean, you are unlawfully touching me. I do not want to leave, and you've already got a case coming towards you, Miller, you and Logan both, for the last time. I want to leave on my own volition after my three minutes are done. Get your hands off of me. Get your hands off of me. I want to leave on my own volition. Let me leave on my own volition. You piece...
At this time, we'll resume, and Ms. Janet Harris, if you'd please come up and speak.
Well, as I'm an actress, and as I say in the theater, that's a tough act to follow, but I intend to do it. I'm here tonight to say thank you. This is a month of thankfulness, and I have a lot to be thankful for, and I'm thankful for all of you. I really am. I am blessed to live in Pasadena. I grew up here. It's my childhood home. I lived many places. I've lived in England. I've lived in Massachusetts, California, always came back home, and I don't intend to go anywhere. My daughter's in Nevada now. She tries to get me to go there. Nope, not leaving. I'm going to stay in Pasadena. I come tonight bearing gifts. I have an 89-year-old pecan tree. Didn't produce last year, but it sure is producing this year, so I brought you some pecans if you'd like to have them. There's a bag for each one of you if I may. And I especially want to thank my councilmen. I have two. I have two houses in Pasadena. You're my councilwoman, and you're my councilman, and I want to thank you for keeping in touch with me. You know, I have a lot of issues, and you've all been working on them, but I hold no grudges. I hold no bitterness. I'm very thankful to have...I'm 77 now. I'm thankful to have made it this far. I've had colon cancer, and I survived that, and I'm a Christian, became a Christian out in Hollywood, believe it or not, and I just have so much to be thankful for, and I want to thank all of you. You're doing a great job. I know it's hard. There's a lot to overcome. There's a lot of evil in this world right now, and I don't understand why people think they can come in here and do stuff like that. I really don't. But God bless you all. It's got to be really hard to deal with it, and I think that's probably it. So thank you. Hope you all have a blessed Thanksgiving, that you spend time with family and friends, spend as much time with them as you can, because, you know, I've lost so many now. I was in Sam Rayburn. I was the first year of Sam Rayburn. I've already lost many of my Sam Rayburn classmates. I'm still good friends with several of them, and it's really hard to go to funerals. Anyway, God bless you all. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Alvarez.
To all the fellow citizens in Pasadena, I hope y'all have a merry Thanksgiving with food on the table for the children, for your family, for everyone involved. I take a knee because of the inequality here in Pasadena. I take a knee because of the abuse of power in Pasadena. I take a knee because that abuse of power is directed towards people, minorities. You've abused your power since you got in office. I used to call you Brother Thomas because we went to Sage Mountain together. Now I call you Tyrant Thomas because you're abusing my police department. You're weaponizing them, treating them like you're personal soldiers. These are our employees, and you're my employee. You do not know that. I know you're not educated, so I can...it's hard to stomach that you don't have the knowledge to have that chair that you're sitting in right now. It's very sad. I saw with my own eyes the evil of running for office when you sell your soul. You sold your soul to Chief Jackson. He donated $50,000 to your campaign. Now he's chief. Mr. Officer Palets was supervisor, right? He got fired in January for harassing female officers. Because of his connection with Chief Jackson, you rehired him. That is corruption. I'm up here trying to take care of children, and y'all abuse the power to stop me from taking care of my children. That's what y'all do. My children are doing without because y'all feel that you can use the city resources to attack us. It is disgusting. It is sad. And if a man like me is doing all I can to take care of my family, and y'all going to point me out as a bad guy, have me arrested, have me thrown in jail for freedom of speech, how can you call yourself an American? Ask yourself that. You should answer that to everybody here. How did you...how do you stop someone from freedom of speech and call yourself an American? You can't answer it, can you? You're going to sit up there and act like your crap doesn't stink, and it's sad. It's a real sad day because my children used to see you as Brother Thomas. Now they see you as Tyrant Thomas. We have Ms. Carol Alvarado here. She has to come here and see the disgusting attack on minorities. You ripped the funding from the north side, so they cannot do what they got to do for the people up there, and that's been going on for decades. The reason why y'all do it is y'all discourage them, the north side, from voting. That's how you keep voting down, by cutting their funds. Ask every one of them, what happened to their funds? It got chopped. Ask one of them, what happened to their funding? It's solid. It's solid. We know what y'all been doing for decades.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Robert Jeter.
Good evening, council. On the council minutes for October 21st, meeting approved at the November 4th meeting, I noticed my name was misspelled. There is only one T in Jeter. Not a single member of council corrected it. I've been coming here for 10 years to address this body of government, and none of you know my name? Really? Not one of you? Dang. Counsel, I have a confession. I'm not actually offended. You see, something that seems to be lost in modern governance is humor, people's ability to be engaging in the public and have fun with the tasks at hand and still get the work done. I hope y'all take a lighthearted lesson from this to read the minutes more closely and have a good time while up here representing the citizens of Pasadena. That's what humor looks like. Some folks are good at it, some are not, like Guerrero. Hey, speaking of that guy, on October 22nd, while I was at the convention center town hall meeting, walking about among the booths for the various city departments, he made the same vulgar and untrue comments again that amount to fighting words. Of course, as the city's past performance has shown, if I respond to it and stand up for myself, the city likes to place me in handcuffs on the words of a degenerate councilman and haul me off with no probable cause. There has still been no censure resolution or other recourse by the city for citizens from this ongoing sustained harassment and bullying after being notified of it over and over, which reflects very poorly upon our city's current leadership performance. Interestingly, this time, the comment was made in the presence of Councilman Fusler. Why do you associate yourself with that disreputable behavior? Your family has a respected legacy in some circles. Why disobey the Fifth Commandment and dishonor your parents by getting involved with that? You're not elected to serve him. You're elected to serve the city, our community. He only moved to Pasadena from Aldine after COVID. He has not been here long enough to truly comprehend his disgrace upon himself. You have. Not even mad at you, just disappointed in so much wasted potential by your association with Manny's mafia. Robert Jeter. Remember the name, council. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Eric Sanchez.
Good evening. My name is Eric Sanchez. Many of you may have already heard the news, the vote to release the Epstein files has officially passed the House, but Pasadena has its own files that must be released as well. I'm talking about the long-hitting photographs, records, settlements involving the murders of Daniel Lynn Stevens, Moises De La O, Willa Russell Coggsenine, and Marwen William Harris. Despite the evidence I've obtained, the media refuses to speak on these cases. Even the Harris County District Attorney, the FBI, the Department of Justice, all avoid the topic and the other murder cover-ups by Joseph Chikimchik, the most infamous medical examiner in history. Even so-called independent journalists like Grizzi Hurnus won't speak on these cases. Why? Because they are all puppets of the state. They are all complicit in the cover-ups, just like with the Epstein files. Even your chief MP Jackson is in on it. Most recently, with the 2023 death of Derek Dow, Pasadena never assigned a homicide investigator to his case and never properly interrogated his ex-girlfriend, Vanessa Moreno, disregarding the domestic violence Derek reported against her in the past, and found no gunshot residue on his hands, but still Chief Jackson is passing it off as a false negative and declaring it a suicide, depriving Derek's mother of justice. It may interest everyone here to know, Pasadena is one of the only cities in America where council members cannot place an item in the agenda. The mayor has absolute control. That is not democracy, that is dictatorship. So as it stands, you councilmembers have limited power, and that's why you cannot speak back at these meetings. But you do have one point of leverage. So tonight, I'm asking each of you on this council, if you believe in God, if you believe in justice, and don't condone the murder of innocents and subsequent cover-ups, just don't work with this man. Do not vote yes on any of his new business until the mayor addresses the old business Pasadena has been burying 48 years and counting by placing the release of all the files as an agenda item. Before you bow your head in prayer here, I want to remind you of God's Word in the Book of Isaiah, chapter 1, verses 15 through 18. God does not accept prayers from the hands stained with blood. He demands the wrongs to be corrected, the oppressed defended, and the truth brought into the light. So I'm asking this council, do the right thing. No business should be passed through until the old business is finally addressed regarding all these murders. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Shelley Fuller.
Thank y'all for all being here, and this is hard for me because I've been sitting here in this meeting, and it's brought me to tears because I was raised in this city. My dad was a personal director here for over 30 years. I worked in this city. I retired from here in South Houston after 20 years, and I've been to all but one city council meeting since Thomas and you guys have all been re-elected and elected to serve our city. There's not one person up here that I can't look at and say that we all have good things about us, we all have poor things about us, but everybody here was voted in and represents our city. And to see what has been happening in these city council meetings just like just breaks my heart because none of us deserve that, and we do serve a God that is more powerful than any of this, and I've heard his name used a lot here tonight and in the past. And I just want to thank each of y'all, and I'm looking at you. I'm even looking at you, sir, and you, sir, and the people I can't look behind me because I've been asked not to, but I just want to thank each of y'all for your hearts and what you bring to the city and to our council. And for any problems and issues, I can't fix them, but I just want y'all to know that I can pray, and I'll be praying for each and every one of y'all because y'all have a tough job. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're going to have a presentation at this time, and I'd like to welcome and introduce our state senator, Carol Alvarado. We're going to be giving her a few minutes for her presentation. Welcome.
Hi, welcome. Good evening, Mayor and council members. It's good to be with y'all and the public as well. Since we got back from the legislative session, I've been trying to visit with as many cities that are in Senate District Six, and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I'll see if we can get it in 10 minutes, but you should be getting a handout. Does anybody have a handout? Okay. A handout. Now, this isn't everything that we pass this session, but it's just kind of a high-level, broad view of what we were able to accomplish. So as y'all know, we are in session every other year, so when we pass a budget, it has to be for two years, and then we come in and we pass a supplemental budget, and that supplemental money is then released. And then also, you know, cities and local government entities have been kind of under the gun in the past sessions where there've been a lot of successful and some attempts to hard local control. So, and that crosses party lines. It's not a D or an R issue, but I served on the Houston City Council, so I'm all for you being able to keep local control and do what you need to do without the legislature strong-arming you. So there are always thousands of bills that are passed. It's very easy to kill a bill. It's very hard to pass a bill. This session, there were 8,700 bills that were passed, but only of those, a little over 1,200, were actually signed into law. Governor Abbott vetoed 28 bills, which was kind of on the low end because last session, he vetoed about 74 bills, and so luckily, none of those were mine. I mentioned that we are in session every other year, so when we pass a budget, it sounds like a lot of money, but it has to sustain us for two years. We came in to the session with a $24 billion surplus. We passed a budget of $338 billion, which is the largest budget in the state's history, and as y'all know, we have well over 30 million people here now in our state, and that continues to grow. So just to tell you about some of the highlights, I know we all know San Jacinto College. We were able to secure $10 million for the San Jack Center for Biotechnology. That's a big win for a college that educates so many here in East Harris County. This is about creating pathways for young people in Houston to earn high-paying, high-tech careers in pharmaceuticals and scientific research right here at home. We brought home about $30 million for M.D. Anderson's Institute for Cell Therapy Discovery and Innovation. We are, as you know, already the medical capital of the world, and we want to make sure that we stay on the cutting edge when it comes to research and being able to continue to save people's lives. Water was a big issue, so we were able to do some things on water. There was a ballot initiative proposition that will make sure that we have enough water for generations to come, but also taking care of our water infrastructure. The Lynchburg pump station is a critical part of our infrastructure because it supplies well over 60% of the water in the Houston and surrounding areas, so we were able to get some money to make some much-needed repairs there. We were also active in securing money for flood mitigation projects in our general region area, 2.5 million for the local storm water retention, and 4.3 million for the Gulf Coast Protection District construction of storm surge barriers. So that's important because we know that when we have storms, we're always concerned about the storm surge, and so hopefully, you know, we can get things like the Ike Dyke built. Was able to pass the bill with Representative Dennis Paul, and that is making sure that we have a dedicated account for the Gulf Coast Protection District so that when that money comes in, and we will also be able to get grants, gifts, money that's appropriated from the state, and it makes sure that it stays in that account. And it makes sure that it stays in that account so that projects like the Ike Dyke and other things that address flooding and storm surge will not go for other purposes. I was on the Finance Committee this time, and so I was able to get a few things that were kind of in response to some tragedies that helped that occurred right before we went into session. There was a young student at Millby High School, Sergio Rodriguez, who was killed because he, there was a train blocking. And if you know about my upbringing, I grew up in Manchester, had a lot to do with stalled trains on the tracks, and I've been very vocal about that. And unfortunately, we've seen this too many times where the trains are blocked, and the ones especially by school, we've seen kids that are going under the train or trying to jump over it, and that's what happened to Sergio Rodriguez. So we secured $10 million for a pedestrian crosswalk that will go over Old Galveston Road and Broadway. And so that, that is in the works. It's a project with the City of Houston. We also were helpful in bringing home a million-dollar grant fund for the Memorial Hermans Healthcare Workforce Apprenticeship Programs. We do a lot to make sure that we can recruit doctors. We have the new medical school at the University of Houston. We do a lot to bring in nurses. There's always a nursing shortage, but there's that support staff in the hospitals that are also very critical that work to support the doctors and the nurses. So this apprenticeship program will go a long way to making sure that we can continue to have the necessary staff. As we all know, during the pandemic, every level of staffing was critical. We did a lot in criminal justice. One of the big things that was on the ballot in November was bail reform. We have tried to get that passed many times, and we were able to get the bill passed. Of course, it caused, you know, you have a constitutional amendment. But this is addressing the issue of violent offenders being let out on bond. It requires that judges deny bail in cases of murder, aggravated assault with serious bodily injury, aggravated kidnapping, aggravated sexual assault, trafficking of persons, indecency with a child, and other serious violent crimes. A couple of things that I worked on in the public safety arena, as you recall, during Beryl and De Echeo, when we lost power for so long, we had to get, well, CenterPoint had to bring in contractors from other states. And many of them, and CenterPoint's own, were getting harassed and threatened. People were upset, rightfully so, but a lot of these linemen were under some serious aggressive behavior by people, you know, threatening them and assaulting them. And so we increased the penalties for those who assault or harass utility workers. You know, we know that people were upset because they couldn't get their lights on, but at some point, even CenterPoint said to all of the elected officials, can you please post something? They can be mad at us, but not the linemen, especially those that are traveling here. And they were saying, look, we don't have to take this kind of behavior. We'll go back to Alabama, Louisiana, or wherever. And so now the linemen are treated like first responders during that time. Right after our bill passed, but the bill wasn't enacted, there was a situation, I think it may have been in Conroe, Montgomery County, where a utility worker, i.e. a guy that was going in to lay some cable in someone's home, got into an argument with the homeowner, and the homeowner shot him nine times. So unfortunately, our bill had not been passed into law. Also, I passed a bill that, Senate Bill 47, that expands who can use a pseudonym during court proceedings. There are certain crimes that, victims of crimes that can use a pseudonym, not using their real name to protect them. And this one, we added when someone is filmed intimately without their consent and survivors of sexual assault. So now victims of those crimes can feel free to report it and not be fearful of having to use their real name. Also, we do so much on human trafficking. Seems like every session we were passing one bill or another. And unfortunately, Houston is a hotbed for human trafficking. One thing I learned about was that many victims of human trafficking, after they leave that world, they are, they're still having some constant reminders such as tattoos because their bosses, they brand them like animals. And so now they will be able to, from the Victims, Texas Victims Fund, be able to use that money for removal of their tattoos. Of course, there has to be, you know, the paperwork to back up that they were, you know, involved. It wasn't just somebody who said, oh, I want my tattoo removed, but they weren't a victim of human trafficking. I've got something, a few things done when it comes to transportation. Again, back to the trains. We have a lot of rail crossings. There are 9,000 rail crossings in our state, more than any other state in the nation. And in this past July, the Federal Railroad Administration said that they received more complaints from Texas than any other state, over 7,300 complaints. Of those complaints, 21% came from first responders, fire, and police who were blocked by trains. They could not get to their destination. And then 25% of the reports included instances of pedestrians forced to jump over the train or crawl under. So a bill that I was able to work on with the Chair of Transportation will bring a $250 million grant program so that counties and cities can apply for this money for grade separations, underpasses, overpasses, and such. Public education was another area where we scored big. There were a couple of things that happened in public education that were in the news a lot. The voucher program, which is a billion-dollar program, that's something I did not support. I'm a student of public schools, and the voucher program will go for private schools and homeschooling. And we looked at what's happened in other states where the voucher program has been implemented, and you see a decrease in public education and more money put into the voucher program. And the majority of the students that used the voucher money were students that were already in private school. So we didn't do a whole lot to bring in new students. On the good side, though, we did invest $8.5 billion in our public education system. And that, that's important because it went for teacher pay raises, but it also went for staff in the schools, and that's something we had asked for. We need to make sure that we can pay our bus drivers more, the janitors, the people that serve the food in the kitchen. So $4 billion will go to an across-the-board teacher and staff pay raise and expansion of the merit-based pay program. $150 million to expand career and technical educational opportunities. $430 million to increase funding for school safety. $1.3 billion for school district operational costs. We heard from so many of our school districts, the rising costs of things like utilities and insurance and transportation. So we heard the school districts, including here in Pasadena, very loud and clear, so giving money to supplement some of those costs. Right before we went into session, I had another tragic death of a constituent. Landon Payton was a student at Marshall Middle School in the near North Side. He collapsed in the gym, and there were two things that happened that may have saved his life. One, the defibrillator in the gym did not work. And secondly, no one knew the nurse, the coach, no one knew CPR. So I passed two bills to address that. One is to require that the coaches and the nurses and everybody have, they have to know CPR. It's very basic. You would think that at least the coaches and the nurses do. And then the other one is making sure that when our fire inspectors go into the schools and they inspect all the equipment, that now the defibrillators are included in that. I served on the Natural Resources and Environmental Committee. We passed several bills to address concrete batch plants. I know that's not a real big issue in neighborhoods here, but it is in other parts of our district. And so we passed a few things that are community and consumer-friendly, that kind of tighten the reins on some rogue concrete batch plants. Getting close to the end here. In the area of healthcare, I think we all know someone, either family members or friends, that have been impacted by people who have Alzheimer's. And one of the things that was on the constitutional amendments this last November, this few weeks ago, was the creation of the Dementia Prevention and Research Institute of Texas. That's a $3 billion investment. That will go for research in the area of dementia. So since it's been passed into law, I've been out to Methodist Hospital to look at some of the things that they're doing. They'll be applying for grant money, being able to recruit staff and faculty, researchers, and hopefully, Texas can lead the effort in finding a cure for Alzheimer's. The big thing that I will end with is another item that passed that was on the ballot. Thank y'all for going out to vote for these all. We had seventeen, and all of them passed. The big one was property tax relief. This is our second session in a row to really deliver something back for taxpayers, and this is a $51 billion investment. We increased the home state exemption from $100,000 to $140,000. If you are disabled or over 65, that jumps up to $200,000. So we also had a lot going on with redistricting, and so that's a little more partisan discussion, but I know that y'all probably kept up with it. There was a lawsuit. Many of us had to go to El Paso and testify, and today the courts ruled that the existing maps would stay and not the ones that were passed this session. So kind of unprecedented to do mid-decade redistricting. The way that goes is every ten years, you do the census, which means we would be doing the census in 2030, and then in 2031, you wait, you gather all that information. And it takes a long time. It takes it, you know, about six months to do. And then you draw the maps, and then it passes, and then it's enacted. But this was done very unusually, unusual, unconventional. So I imagine there's going to be an appeal, and then we'll see what happens there. But I wanted to thank you. Mayor, I'm glad you are back. We wished you well. We were in the heat of the session, but I kept up with a few. Jonathan kept me posted, and I'd ask him how you were doing and others, and I know Commissioner Garcia also. So we're all glad that you're back and looking healthy. Thank you for your service. I know a lot of times it's not easy to do this, this job in this arena that we're in, but we're here to serve the people and the public, and I'm glad to see that so many people come to speak and to share their thoughts and that they're here at almost seven o'clock on a Tuesday night. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
If I may, just real quick, I wanted to just clarify a lot of my constituents I've asked. Is Pasadena, the north side of Pasadena, including down to, I guess, District B, C, and D, is that still considered, would that still not fall under current lawsuit, and we still consider Congressional District 29?
I believe so. So they said that the maps, like where we are now, would stay. So then I'd have to look at your map, but if it's in the 29th, it would stay in the 29th.
It would stay.
Yeah. Because some of it's paired under the maps that they, that they tried to pass with, like I live in 29, but then it had me in nine, and I think some of this area was going to be a nine, and paired with Liberty.
Thank you, Senator.
You're welcome. You bet.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, folks. That brings us to presentation of minutes.
Motion.
Can I have a motion? Got a motion by Guerrero, second by Fusler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any knows? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, that brings us to progress payments. Can I have a motion? Motion Guerrero, second Fusler. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. Finance resolutions?
Motion.
Motion Estrada, second, Councilman Styron. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Personnel changes, A. Motion?
Motion.
Motion Estrada, second Styron. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, final readings, please.
Ordnance 2025 to 15, 2025 to 16, 2025 to 17, 2025 to 18, 2025 to 19, 2025 to 20, 2025 to 21, 2025 to 22, 2025 to 23, 2025 to 24, 2025 to 25, excuse me, 2025 to 26, 2025 to 27, 2025 to 28.
Okay. Can I have a motion? Motion Dow.
Second.
Second Estrada.
Mayor.
Any questions?
Mayor.
Councilman Van Hout, please.
2025 to 16, we have an amendment to change the incentive pay to be limited to one degree and one certification or license. It was not written up as a motion, but I move to change it to what was presented to us.
May I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second Dow. Any questions? Now back to the original motion.
Mayor, we vote on this.
Right.
The amendment.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Councilman Valerio? No?
Mayor, I rise to table ordinance 2025.
Let's finish with this one first.
It's part of it. It's part of it.
Okay.
You got the amendment that passed. Now she's...
Okay, go ahead.
Tabling.
Thank you.
2025 to 16, ordinance 225 to 26, and ordinance 225 to 27 regarding education pay.
Okay. Can I have a second?
Speaker's on. I'll second it.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote for that, starting with A?
Mayor, could you please, which ones was that again?
Madam Secretary.
I don't have, Councilwoman, is it 216 and 217?
No, ma'am. 216, 226, 227.
Okay, those three. Okay. Roll call vote. Council, yes, ma'am.
I believe you're going to have to take a roll call vote on each one second.
Okay. Let's do the first one. Madam Secretary, roll call vote. Councilman Valerio?
Somebody's on. No.
Councilman Valerio?
Can I have clarification, please? If I say yes, that means we are tabling it?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Councilman Guerrero?
Just to verify, this is 2025 to 16, correct? Can you clarify, too, if I say yes, what if you, could you?
Say yes, it's tabled. No?
No.
Councilwoman Van Hout?
No.
Councilman Estrada?
Aye.
Councilman Dow?
Aye.
Councilman Fusler?
No.
Councilman Styron?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Motion fails.
Okay. Okay. So, Mayor.
That's the original one, correct?
The, no, sir, this is the roll call vote for it to go forward.
Correct.
Councilwoman Valerio asked for, and she clarified that a yes vote is tabling the vote.
Okay. So what is the total vote?
Well, a yes vote is aye. So if you want the vote to pass, you're going to vote no or nay on that one, no. If you want it to pass as it is with the motion.
I voted, I'd table it. I mean, I know what we're voting on, so I don't know if anybody else doesn't know what they're voting on.
We do.
Yeah, fine.
Then motion carries the table.
Mayor.
Okay, now we need to...
I'm so sorry. May I please clarify what tabling means to the audience? It doesn't mean that we are not supporting this. It just means that we're going to... It doesn't mean that we are not supporting this, it just means that we're going to pick it up later on.
Correct. It's, it's basically, it could have been deferred or tabled, one or the other, and this is for further clarification. Okay, Madam Secretary?
226.
226.
I have 26, 2, that's okay, no, that's all right, so 225.
Okay.
Okay. It's all right, 226.
Okay, 226, we have a motion to table.
Yes.
Any discussion?
I'll second that.
Second, Councilman Dow. Okay, an aye is to table, a no is not to table, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Councilman Horario.
No.
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 Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Okay, motion doesn't carry.
Give me one second, I'm going, I will have to do this really quick, I want to make sure that I have this correct. A, no. B, yes. C, no. D, no. E, yes. F?
Yes.
Yes. That's the one I was missing. G, no. H, no. And Mayor, no.
No. Motion fails. Okay, and the other one was number? Okay. So we have a motion. This will be a roll call. Any discussion?
Can I have a second?
Do we have a second?
Who is the motion?
The motion is to table.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Estrada, roll call vote. Councilman Horario?
No.
Ms. Bianca?
Yes.
Councilwoman Van Hout? Councilman Estrada?
Aye.
Councilman Dow?
Aye.
Councilman Fuschler?
No.
Councilman Styron?
Aye.
Okay, I am a no.
You have five to four, in favor of tabling.
Okay, motion carries, we'll table it. Okay. Now we go back to the original?
You, you already, you originally had a vote, Dow and Estrada, so now you're going to take it as it was voted on this way.
Okay. All right, so we're going to now move on to first readings? No, we need to vote on it.
You have to take another vote on the light.
Okay. Can I have a motion to vote on as is with the tables? Motion by Emmanuel Guerrero, second by Fuschler. Any discussion?
Yes, sir. May I vote no, 225, ordinance 225, ordinance 217, ordinance 219, ordinance 221. I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you.
225, 217, 219, 221. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion carries. All right, first readings.
Ooh, I don't know if I'm coming or going. I'm just like all over the place.
Mayor. Madam Secretary, ordinance, final readings, 25, 2021, was that grouped to be in that, in that vote, in that prior vote?
You're going to have to start, I'm so sorry.
Ordinance 2020, 2025, 2021, was that grouped, did that just pass vote?
Yes.
Okay, I want to abstain from that, from ordinance 225.
225?
Yes, ma'am. Final readings, authorizing and approving.
Final readings, give me just one second. 221, abstain.
Yes.
Yes, sir. And also on 225?
No, 221, I wanted, I want to be abstained from that. And on 216, I voted aye, no, but I did want to vote aye, I made a mistake on that.
Okay, you've already voted, sir.
He already voted.
I thought we were going to separate them, so.
You already voted on that.
It's tabled.
It's tabled.
It's tabled.
Right, it's not going to make a difference, but, yeah.
I'm so sorry, the vote had already been, once he, once he uses that gavel, it's done.
Okay, Madam, yes?
Took her, you actually didn't vote on that one because it was tabled.
Tabled, correct. Okay. First readings, Madam Secretary.
All right. Ordinance 2025 to 29, and ordinance deannexing and discontinuing certain land from the limits and boundaries and as part parcel of the City of Pasadena, Texas, as authorized by laws of the State of Texas, establishing and designating said disannexed part of the area located in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the City of Pasadena as authorized by the Texas Local Government Code, Section 4244, as amended to be known as Industrial District. Excuse me just for a second. So sorry. Ordinance 225 to 30, authorizing approving a contract between the City of Pasadena, Texas, Texas Materials Group Incorporated doing business as Texas Materials for the purchase by the City of Pasadena of asphalt, emulsified, and tack oils. Ordinance 2025 to 31, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pasadena, Texas, at Chapter 15 Health to adopt mandates set forth by the 89th Texas Legislative with passage of Houston, House Bill 2844, Mobile Food Vendors, and Senate Bill 108, authorized to regulate food, amending Article 2, food establishments, at Section 15-21, definitions, 15-22, permit, 15-221, applications, 1522.2, lost permits, 15-22.3, permit fees, Article 3, meet at Sections 15-37 through 1541, deleting Article 5, food and beverage vending machine sanitation, amending Article 6, seafood dealers, by deleting Sections 15-120, fee 15121, issuance 15-123, expiration 15-124, revocation, amending Section 15-125, penalty, deleting Article 7, farm produce, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, and providing for severability, and providing a penalty. Ordinance 2025 to 32, amending Ordinance 2024-7, which authorized a contract with Stripes and Stops Company Incorporated to increase funding for traffic pavement marking services. Ordinance 2025 to 33, authorizing approving a contract bound between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and WW Payton Corporation for the Water Production Resilency Program Phase 1, CIP number W096, for a total appropriation of $1,45,758 from the system fund retained earning account 003-35101. Ordinance 2025 to 34, accepting a grant from the Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, fiscal year 2026, rifle-resistant body armor grant program in the amount of $18,000. Ordinance 2025 to 35, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pasadena, Texas, at Chapter 36, traffic, Article 6, speed regulation, Section 36, 145, 125 miles per hour zone, to add Kirby Lake subdivision and Kirby Bend subdivision to the 25 mile per hour zone, providing a penalty, providing a repealing clause, providing a savings clause, and providing for severability. Ordinance 2025 to 36, authorizing approving events by U. Community Garden Rules and agreement development, developed by the Parks and Recreation Department. Ordinance 2025 to 37, authorizing approving a contract bound between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and S.E.R. Construction Partners LLC for the shaver, street paving, and drainage improvements, Phase 2, Project CIP number S131, for a total appropriation of $9,059,792.39 from the 2022 Certification of Obligation Fund Balance Account. Ordinance 2025 to 38, authorizing approving a contract between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and AVIA Incorporated for the city's annual maintenance for AVIA phone system and audex answering system, utilizing the TIPS Cooperative Contract Number 210101 and appropriating the amount of $85,850.16. Ordinance 2025 to 39, authorizing approving, accepting a grant award from the State of Texas Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division, General Victim Assistant Grant Program in the amount of $81,340.98. Ordinance 2025 to 40, authorizing approving a contract between the City of Pasadena, Texas, and Weaver and Tidwell LLP for forensic auditing service.
Motion to approve. Got a motion by Councilman Dow, second by Councilman Guerrero. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Madam Secretary, resolutions, please. Get you a drink of water.
Resolution 2025 to 100, authorizing the Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department to accept an in-kind donation of coloring pages with free kids' meals valued at $650 from Casa Ale for giveaways at the City of Pasadena Music and the Movie Event. Resolution 2025 to 101, accepting an in-kind donation of onsite team participation of What a Guy Plinko Game with prizes and coupons, six $25 gift cards for prize baskets and Whataburger swag valued at $3,500 from Whataburger to giveaways, for giveaways at the City of Pasadena Monster Mash Event in connection with the Parks and Recreation Department. Resolution 2025 to 102, authorizing the Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department to accept an in-kind donation of tacos and sodas from El Perro Caliente valued at $1,200 in connection with the City of Pasadena Annual Christmas Tree Lighting Event on December 5, 2025. Resolution 2025 to 103, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute in the city secretary to attest general and no litigation certificates of the City of Pasadena related to issuance of tax-exempt bond financing by Southeast Texas Housing Financing Corporation for the Civil Place Apartments, La Porte, Texas. Resolution 2025 to 104, a resolution authorizing approving appointment of city Section 3 Coordinator, Civil Rights Officer, Fair Housing Coordinator, and Labor Standards Officer related to the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Reallocation Program. Resolution 2025 to 105, accepting a donation of $181 from Rotary International Pasadena to be allotted to Neighborhood Network for use in connection with Team Up to Clean Up 2025. Resolution 2025 to 106, authorizing the Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department to accept a donation of $250 from Clark Freight Lines as sponsorship for the Christmas Tree Lighting Event. Resolution 2025 to 107, accepting an in-kind donation of cookies valued at $2,000 from Savannah's Cafe and Bakery for the City of Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department's annual Christmas Tree Lighting. Resolution 2025 to 108, a resolution on behalf of the Pasadena Police Department to apply for a grant from the Office of the Governor, bullet-resistant components for law enforcement vehicles fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $150,000. This is a non-matching grant. Resolution 2025 to 109, a resolution authorizing the Pasadena Parks and Recreation Department to apply for a grant from Game Time to be used to purchase a playground for Tater Park. Resolution 2025 to 10, a resolution of the governing body of the City Council of the City of Pasadena, Texas, casting its vote to appoint directors to the Harris Central Appraisal District's Board of Directors. Resolution 2025 to 11, authorizing and approving city's acceptance of water meter easement of 5,100 Underwood LP and access easements from New Mountain Net Lease Acquisition Corporation and 5,100 Underwood LP for maintenance of water meter to serve Ethox Chemical LLC.
May I have a motion? Motion by Styron, second by Fuschler. Any questions? Councilman.
I will be voting on Resolution K, a resolution of the governing body, the City Council of the City of Pasadena, Texas, casting its vote to appoint directors to the Harris Central Appraisal District Board of Directors. I actually have the opportunity to serve on this board, and this is where you go to appeal your taxes beyond a board of three people. I did not take an intake process, I did not take multiple resumes. I saw for the nominees, but nominees, but not of multiple interested parties, so for that reason, I can't cast it, have not, have not been developed a standardized process for intake notifications.
Thank you, sir. Any others? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. This adjourns our meeting for Tuesday, November 18, at 6 o'clock. I think I can speak for myself and all of our council members. We want to wish you a very happy Thanksgiving and safe travels if you're traveling. God bless.